Call to order, the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting of Monday, November the 7th, 2022, is now 9:02. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Present.
Danielle? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Tell me the two fair board people, Joey.
Mr. Brook on line?
No, Danielle's.
Hi, Danielle's here.
What's Donna? Okay, today we have. Today we have a public hearing, and it's a transfer of property, and anybody who'd like to speak in favor? Fred's not going to speak. Anybody like to speak against?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes, thank you. We didn't have any appointments down, but.
Donna?
Hmm?
She, I talked to Donna about the Fair Board appointments.
Oh.
Can we do those today?
Yeah, I'll expose.
Do you have the names, Donna?
Yes, Joey, and I'm going to spell his last name, Kaelin, K-A-E-L-I-N. And Bailey Jester, J-E-S-T-E-R. That's a girl.
Jester?
Uh huh. Yes.
I'd make a motion, we appoint Joey, but I'd also, and I know this isn't through the Fair Board, but I'd like to make a motion, we appoint Fred Cummings to the board also.
In place of who?
In place of Bailey.
Okay, what's your pleasure, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Fred, you just got railroaded.
That's a non-paying job, you know. We appreciate your interest.
We need your help Saturday, we're having a demo.
Yes, if anybody would like to volunteer, to be a volunteer, I don't. What are the hours, Donna, that the volunteers start working on Saturday?
You'd have to ask Melanie, me and her will start like at nine, but we don't need other people until later.
Call Melanie Marshall if you're interested, thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, October 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Two things at once here. I'm sorry, James. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Okay, now we have some fun, a presentation, Mr. Carroll's here with Mad Axe, and I have no idea what, if you'd like to step over.
Hi, I'm Nathaniel Carroll with Mad Axe here in Muncie. I had, we just opened up here in February, recently had a ribbon cutting, and with the holiday season coming around, we were trying to think of a special way to give something back to the county employees, so I was offering a holiday discount of 50% off, I think I have on there December 4th, like a Sunday when we're not open, where people can, county employees can go in and sign up online, just like anyone else would, and then pick their hour they would like to come in with their family. I'll limit it to four per person that works in the county. It's 16 and up, so that will maybe limit some too, but a discounted rate, the holiday's stressful enough for parents and people out there, so I was trying to think of a way for people to come out and have fun while they're out holiday shopping.
Well, thank you for the offer. I've never done that before, and I don't know if I will, but.
Well, I will say there are a lot of people that feel that way, and honestly, everyone that comes in, comes out, and they're like, this is a great stress reliever, this is awesome. So I've had zero complaints, and I've had zero accidents, so that's a good thing, knock on wood.
That's what I was going to say, holiday season, Christmas. Yeah, you need the stress.
Well, congratulations on your new business.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Cummings is here for a presentation, I understand, it's kind of special.
So, one of the best things that we can do in public safety is recognize people that do special things, and so there are several dispatchers here in the room today because we're going to be honoring a dispatcher who very early in his career was on the phone on October 10th for a live birth on a 911 call. And those are typically things that we want to try to recognize. Most of the dispatchers in this room have never experienced a live birth on the phone, I am one of them. It's kind of an anomaly, and so to have somebody that's been here less than a year to actually have this experience was pretty special. And so I'm here today to honor him, so if I can call Carl Barber up. So on October 10th, he was the call taker on a call that resulted in a successful delivery of a baby here in Muncie. And so I'm here today to present him with a certificate of recognition, because I think that this is one of the things in somebody's career that should be recognized. So, this is for Carl, I know Mia wants to take some pictures. Told you it was going to be easy, and you weren't in trouble.
Thank you so much.
If you can take some pictures with them, that would be good, too. That's it.
Thank you. That's a very good job, Carl. Proud of you.
Thank you.
And all the dispatchers, you know, they do an amazing job down at our 911 center, we greatly appreciate each and every one of you, so thank you all for all you do.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Mrs. McCammon with some news about the health insurance.
I'm being harassed by the cheap seats. Okay, Pam McCammon, Human Resource Director, well, it's that time of year again we get to renew our benefits, and first of all, I want to thank, John's not here today, but I want to thank John for working with me on this, and Ginger for the, we start working on this about the 1st of July, and we get it finalized now, but I do want to thank the people that involved through this process. And we have, I'm just going to kind of fill you in a little bit on what everything's, we have reached out to different vendors, and the vendor we have now, which is GPA Apex, is still giving us the best rates and saving us the most money. So we once again have, we want to sign with them, and last year we added an HRA account to all the employees to where on an individual you have, your deductible is up to $4,000, and then from $4,000 to $5,000 is an out-of-pocket, and then after $5,000, everything's paid 100%. Well, the commissioners picked up that thousand last year and paid for every person that got, when they met their deductible for, the commissioners paid the four to five, and then when they hit the five, everything was paid. So I don't think people realize what the commissioners do for us, because they didn't have to do that. And so again this year, we've agreed to do that again, which that will really help the people. And we did change prescription companies last year, we went to a TrueRx, and we can get bigger discounts on the specialty drugs, and that has saved us up till now is $163,000. So that's a big savings. The Vision, Delta, Dental, One America Life Insurance, voluntary life, short-term, long-term, is going to stay the same until 2024. We got those rates locked in until 1-1 of '24, which is huge. So with all the rates and the, and we've, like I said, we've worked on this forever, our increase this year is going to be 3.5%. I had asked each department to allow 10%, and our increase is going to be 3.5%. But when I asked the commissioners about this, what they, without hesitation, they're going to pick up the 3.5%, so there will be no benefit raises, no raises to our benefits this year for our employees. And I know I'm kind of partial to my bosses, but really, when you see them out, just know that they're working for you guys, and just thank them. You don't have to buy them a drink, or, just thank them, because without hesitation, they're helping you guys. So we all can enjoy our 5% raise without insurance raising. So really, that's all I have, really, that's all I have to say, if anyone has any questions, but.
Well, when you said it had increased, and I agree, Apex is probably the best one to continue with, but when you said there was increases, you know, in places I've been employed before in the past, you pass that on to the employees. And everyone got a decent raise this year, and it would be like, almost like taking the raise away, so. I think we all feel the same way, that we wanted to support the employees and pick up the difference.
Well, you don't know how much, I personally appreciate that. So, that's really all it is, I have signed on, I have signed the contract to keep this going, because I had to sign it last week to keep the rates the way they were. So we'll get paperwork to you, I just don't have it yet, we've just got to get your approval, and then I'll get the paperwork to you to sign.
Thanks.
Thanks for your hard work on this, Pam. The motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Moyers not here today, but we have this Bridge 51 contract with RQAW, and it's for the consultants.
Looks like the compensation's not to exceed $214,890.
Correct. And it won't be finished until 2027, but we have to start now to get these things lined up, so.
Danielle, did you or John, was you able to review the contract?
John did.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Did you say Bridge 15?
51.
51. Okay, Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes, thank you. And then we have Mr. Cummings again for the Ball Brothers Grant.
These are a little out of order. There's going to be a request to approve a grant from the Ball Foundation for the mobile dispatch vehicles. This actually, this line is actually to get approval from the commissioners to sign the purchase agreement for the two vehicles. So I need you guys to approve that so that I can sign that. You guys should have a copy of that, too.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, that's. That was ordinance. Dash 026.
Oh. That's what you just did? No, the ordinance is later, but we don't need that ordinance, and when we get there, and I'll explain why.
Okay, thank you. Very confusing. Okay, then we have a quick claim deed, and I, anybody speaking on that, I have. It's for some land out of Delville, I believe.
I can talk about this if you want me to.
Yes, please.
So you guys had already approved the transfer of these properties, we finally had someone come up, the Cash and Carry, and say they were interested in that small little section next to their property, so I prepared the quick claim deed to transfer that to them.
It's just a small parcel that, and they've probably been cutting the grass all these years, but now it's going to be official. Okay, thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
And that, who's it for?
Cash and Carry.
Quick claim deed.
I'm sorry.
Cash and Carry, lumber company.
Over in Delville.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Now, we have Mr. Fluke for Tyler Technologies. Contract.
Morning Commissioners, Jim Fluke from the IT Department. What I presented you this morning is an agreement with Tyler Technologies. This agreement is a freebie, per se, from Tyler. It's just an agreement letting them know that they can give us the license for this, what we call multi-server searches, and what this will allow us to do now with the upgrade that we did in June, is to be able to have other jurisdictions that use Tyler Technology Services for their public safety to do searches across their servers for persons and vehicles. It's a feature that it's being used, you know, nationwide by Tyler, and also, it's also used locally in the state by Madison and Hamilton County. It's, I've already been approached by Madison and Hamilton to get this set up for us and proceed with the, there is an agreement that we're going to have to have signed by each of the other two agencies, which is just a understanding, memo of understanding of what services are going to be provided, and I'll get that put together and sent over to John to review, and then bring that back once we're ready to look at, start implementing this.
So you want us to wait?
No, that needs to be signed for us to make our step to start the process, and then we can start working with Hamilton and Madison County.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement with Tyler for $0.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes, thank you very much. Now we have a professional service agreement with Catalyst Public Affairs Group, and I'd really like to table this, because I did not know anything about this until I picked up my folio folder Friday, and maybe you know more about it.
I agree, I'll make a motion, we table it.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes, thank you. And then we have agreement for the, with the Delaware County Justice Partners LLC of Indiana, for our build out. And it's not too. Estimated at 1.5 million.
Danielle, Johns went over this contract, and.
Yeah, both of us did, this is a precursor to the build operate transfer, so that we can become a regional facility, we have to engage someone to assist, a professional to assist us in doing that, and that's what this agreement is for, but we've gone over the contract.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Okay, on the back page, we have ordinances, first reading ordinance number 2022-026, creating the fund for the.
We don't need this ordinance today because Fred already has a fund for Ball Brothers Foundation, and so we can just use the same fund, which is 9215.
I always thought when you had a new one, you even had to use.
On Ball Brothers, we've been using, if they had one previously in the past, we just, we've been using the same fund number, so we don't have to create a new one, because it's specifically for the Ball Brothers Foundation. And I didn't find this out until after you walked out, right at the last minute, so.
They still have to accept the money and suspend the rules.
I just need for you to accept the money.
I make a motion, we approve the check coming in from Ball Brothers Foundation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Thank you, Fred, for working on that. Okay, then the ordinance number 2022-027.
Hello. I'm filling in for Marta, who can't be here, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this.
And it's very detailed.
Right, it's kind of straightforward, initially, the electrical portion of building permits for commercial projects was a little lengthy, a little confusing to the contractors, so we just sort of tried to clean that up a little bit, especially with so many commercial projects that we're starting to see coming into the county. So that just cleans that electrical portion up a little bit. Same thing with the plumbing, the amount of reviews and inspections that Mr. Fauch has to do, this is just kind of keeping in line with other counties and what they're focusing on as far as permit fees.
There are some small raises.
There are some increases here, yes.
So we will be posting this after we approve it next meeting.
I'll make a motion, we introduce ordinance 2022-027.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Hang on, I don't have 027.
Here you go.
No, I mean, I don't have, Steve didn't make me a thing for 027, I was. On 25, okay, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes, thank you for filling in.
Okay, thank you Commissioners.
Okay, ordinance is for second reading, ordinance number 2022-025, on the traffic.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Thank you. And then we have a resolution for approval, amended resolution number 2022-020A. And Danielle, you said we needed to do this by itself?
Yes, I would, so the notice of the public hearing had the accurate listings, but my understanding is Kyle found additional parcels that weren't included in the map, maybe, and so it's just to make them consistent, but the public hearing was accurate and had all the information.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve amended resolution number 2022-028.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Then the resolution number 2022-022.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-022.
This is a resolution from the Commissioners, making a final determination to deeds to nonprofit entity. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Now it's time for the department heads and elected officials, if they'd like to step to the podium and give us any good news, or.
Morning Commissioner John Cattino, Merx Management, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that Wednesday at 10:00 AM, we're going to be doing a dedication for the new flagpole that have the dispatch center in honor of Mr. Grimes, his parents will be here for that dedication as well. It'll also give you guys an opportunity to take a look at the dispatch center, since the upgrades have all been done, and everything we've done at the building, too, so hopefully you guys can make it out, we'll just have some refreshments afterwards and do that dedication ceremony.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Did I see anybody else? Okay.
Hang on.
Yep.
Quick item, a couple weeks ago, we had an incident down in the boiler room where we had a, some water blow out one of the pipes, and it destroyed the UPS, which runs the IT department backup, and I've pushed it out to the Commissioners, and I'm just letting you know that that is being delivered tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, and we'll hopefully get that put in here in the next week or so.
Did the insurance cover?
I don't know, if that's still being determined or not.
Did we, Jenny, did you turn around and cling for that?
So Steve Foster is going to get me all the invoices resulting from that, and I'm going to send all the insurance to see if something could be.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Foster Building Superintendent, yes, on that, we'll get all the bills, and I'll submit them to Jenny, and then also, I've reached out to you guys, I need to know where we need to process on the shingle roof out at the Justice Center, I have two bids, so I don't know if I, at this point, I need to see what we need to do to maybe start getting this going, so we, I found when, one of the people, when we was out there, it's got a big spot where we're missing shingles, and that building had an insurance claim on it in 2018 that was never fixed, so it's in, it's in bad shape, but I got two bids, the third bid is not.
What kind of square footage are we looking at?
I have to get them, I'd have to get on my email and see what the square footage is, I can get you all that, I got the two bids, I'll send them to you guys, I just didn't know how we need to process. We get it going, the people I've talked to said they can still fit it in this year, so I will talk to you guys, and we'll, let me know how we do this, and I'll get it going.
Yeah, send us the quotes.
Okay. And we, and on top of that, I'm going to build a blast wall, so for future problems, we don't have, because that water just went directly onto that UPS, I'm going to build a blast wall down there to reflect the water if we ever have that again.
Good, thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Brad, could you come up to the podium, please? Who just got back from an economic development trip to Italy, Brad, could you give a little update on that?
Yeah, sure, happy to, Commissioner, yeah, we had a very successful trip to Italy two weeks ago, we spent 10 days over there, Commissioner Henry and Bill Walters accompanied us on the trip, and we met with over 40 companies, which was incredible. Those of you who are aware of the activity of the previous five years, Delaware County has a concentration of Italian firms in our community, Muncie Power Products is owned by Interpump, they purchased the Bravini Building last year and are doing a nice redevelopment project there. Phil Trek is an Italian company that Commissioner King and I worked on four years ago and attracted to come to Delaware County, they started out with a small warehouse, brought all their parts and their products, they then set out on a mission to establish a sales network in the United States, so that was successful, and just last year, they purchased the former Taras Tool Factory on 400 South, so another huge Italian investment in our community. And then Commissioner King and I worked again with Inox Market Service, an Italian stainless steel company, two years ago, who has now completed 149,000 square foot new factory on South Cowan Road and is hiring up to 110 people, so almost over a $20 million investment. So in essence, Delaware County in the last 18 to 24 months has seen nearly $50 million in Italian investment in the county. Commissioner Henry and I, like I said, we met with over 40 additional Italian companies while we were there, we had three opportunities to meet with large groups of companies and then break out into one-on-one sessions, we left that, we left with seven companies agreeing to come visit us here in Delaware County, which is phenomenal, we also left with one company asking us to help them get 15 acres under contract in our county for an additional new facility to be built, so these are big and. So these are big investments, they're big capital investments, they're big taxpaying entities, they're creating good jobs and we want to continue to promote the Italian hub of businesses that we have here. We also have a hub of Canadian companies. Most people don't realize this, but there are five companies operating in Delaware County with Canadian roots, including Clearline Technologies, Magna, Progress Rail, and some others. And so, yeah, so we'll continue to foster those opportunities and grow that. Yeah, it was a pleasure to be on the trip with Commissioner Henry and Bill Walters and we made it, made a very fruitful time of it.
It was, it was a very good trip. Bill, Brad, and their staff does an amazing job for Delaware County and when you go with those guys on these trips, you better have your walking shoes on. They, and it's from 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 or 10:00 at night and it's nonstop. So it's very busy, very productive and you guys done an amazing job and I greatly appreciate the job you guys do for Delaware County, so thank you.
Appreciate that and we'll continue to expand our opportunities and grow our tax base. Things are, things are changing. You can just drive through the industrial center or anywhere around Delaware County and you see construction and things happening, so we're going to continue to promote that and take it in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
Good morning. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I just want to make the Commissioners aware, in January, we're going to be changing the provider that we use in the jail for inmate communications. Worked with Jim, with the new company in Tyler, making sure they have everything that needs to be changed or whatever, but there's no cost to the county for that. If you want to copy the agreement or whatever, I'd be happy to forward that to you, but there is going to be a changeover, but that doesn't affect you, it doesn't affect anybody in here, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Could you, could you send us the agreements so we can look through them? Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys want to discuss any about the juvenile center?
No, I don't think so.
Well, eventually, we're going to have to reach out to other counties also to either see if we can make it regional. Because to me, the sheriff's going to have to know something about this, which he said in the meeting with us, the city police, they're going to have to know something about this because we just can't throw this on everybody like it was thrown on us like two weeks ago.
You want to explain it?
We had the judges come to us, set a meeting a couple of weeks ago about the juvenile detention center. As of right now, the county pays, I believe, $550,000 for 22 beds at the center. We were just informed that come January that our 22 beds will be taken down to 10, plus they will not house female juveniles in the facility. Plus, more or less, we were told eventually they would not be able to take care of that facility and they were interested in the Commissioners taking it over. We were also told that it's 1.7 million to run the facility. We don't have that in a budget because they have their own budget, so if that was to happen, we would have to create a budget of 1.7 million dollars. One of my things is, is instead of waiting, is what I wanted to discuss with you guys about, is reaching out to Grant County, Jay County, Henry County, the surrounding counties, seeing if they would want to be a partner.
I agree.
To come in and help us fund this. I don't want to wait until it's dropped in our lap like it was two weeks ago. I don't want them coming up next year and saying, "We can't run this anymore, take it over," because I think they said some of the kids were being transported to Clark County from some of the other places. I don't want to end up and have to take deputies off the road to transport juveniles over 100 miles, so...
I agree, we need to make those contacts.
Danielle, could you have John reach out to those counties, see if we can set up a meeting with some of their Commissioners to see if they would be interested in possibly making this a regional juvenile detention center? And I believe the judges were talking about a couple of other things also and we'll get with them, have them included in the meeting, have the sheriff included in the meeting. Sheriff, do you have very much contact with Chief Sloan? Have you filled him in or talked to him any about this, just briefly?
Briefly.
Okay, because we'd probably want to have the mayor, county council, city council member, county council, the sheriff, and also Chief Sloan, because it's going to affect them and plus it's going to affect every law enforcement. That way we can get something worked out, because like I said, I don't want to wait till the last minute and try to do something. I've talked to Donna about getting some information to her so we can see if we have to take it over an hourly rate for the workers and what PERF, FICA and all that would cost us also. That way we got, have a better understanding. I had the design sent the other day because I don't know if there's a facility in there to also, for the food, the kitchen in there to serve food, so that might be something else that we have to look, look at as an add-on or somewhere in there, but if it comes down to it, we're going to have to find, I'm just going to say around $2 million to run this facility and we're going to have to figure out ways how we're going to pay for it. Like Brad said, yes, we're getting better in the county because of everything that we've done, bringing in the businesses, building the new justice center to where now we can house out-of-county inmates instead of us paying a half a million to three-quarters of a million to house ours out-of-county. Now, we get to keep those funds, plus we're generating money, money from that, and I know the sheriff's been working on, for the federal inmates to bring more money in. But about $2 million added on, it's going to be a little rough.
I think too, the thing that got me was if we have to house our kids outside the county, it's about $175 a day.
Yep.
150 to 175 a day for the juveniles.
Yep.
So that, we don't want to get into that.
No.
Will we still have the same facility that's out there?
We will still have the same facility, it's just more or less, we will end up running it, so we would have to find a director. We would probably have to have their...
Three shifts.
Employee, yeah, three shifts. Their employees would have to probably make about like what one of our employees make now, which is why I'm saying around $2 million because of increases, because being on the council, I understand, you know, salary increases, FICA, PERF, all that stuff increases, we have to start looking at insurance, what it's going to cost. We would have to get with the county council because they would have to create a whole new budget for this, so that's why I say I don't want to wait till the last hour. And it's not going to cost us anything to sit down and talk to people and try to figure this out.
It's going to get dumped on us.
Yep.
It is. It is going to.
We're going to come up with $2 million.
Well, and I, we're already paying 550, so I mean, I think we just need to sit down and see what exactly it would cost us to run that per year.
And you're suggesting Grant, Jay, Blackford, and who else?
Madison. I would contact every surrounding county.
Buddy around us.
I'd, maybe 50, 60 mile radius.
Yeah.
See where they're taking their juveniles now. I think they said there was 44 beds in there.
Mm-huh.
But we have to do, do something and start looking at it now. I just want to get you guys' input and I think, you know, really people need to know what's going on.
And the county has 44 beds?
Yes, ours facility has 44 beds.
But we've only been promised 22 for the past years. Yeah. I know that, I know that. Yeah. Being involved in all that way back then, it was a busy...
But, you know, try to get the financials from them so we can see what they're paying out actually.
And we need to, that kitchen's on an exterior wall.
Mm-huh.
So we, I agree, we'll probably have to add on to the kitchen to be able to cook the meals there.
Yeah.
I know John's been in contact with their attorney. I just wanted to bring it up, let everybody know, that way we can start figuring something out now instead of just waiting till the last hour and us running around trying to find the money to fund it. Because if we end up, Matt, start paying for juveniles at that price...
Be a little sticky.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have the weights and measures, monthly report, payment of claims of $2,373,196.24 and the ARP claims of $535,834.20.
Make a motion for payment of claims and ARP claims.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And Mr. Regan? And now it's time for the public, if anybody wishes to speak, questions. Ashley Williams did speak, sign up, so Ashley?
Thank you. My name is Ashley Williams. I'm with Eastern Indiana Works, which is your local workforce development board, and I am here today to just, I'm trying to spread the news about a program that we brought to the Muncie area. We were awarded a grant from the Department of Labor to provide programming for 44 young adults here in our community. They have to live here in Muncie, or in Delaware County in general, excuse me. And it's for 18 to 24-year-olds who have left high school prior to graduation but are expressing an interest in learning more about a career in the trades. So the program is called Muncie Youth Build and we're actively recruiting for our next cohort, which is scheduled to start in January. Again, 18 to 24-year-olds who left high school prior to graduation, interested in learning more about construction, interested in getting their high school equivalency. We have partnered with the Career Center for their adult education. We've partnered with Eco Rehab to provide very valuable onsite construction experience for them. They're actually working with that team at Eco Rehab to rehabilitate low-income housing here in our community. They also are going to be taking some leadership development workshops through our partnership with Schaefer Leadership Academy and also working with our local Work One, our America Job Center here in Muncie for career readiness, career placement assistance, and some coaching and mentoring as it relates to soft skill development, preparing them for the workforce. It's a six-month program. As you can tell, it's very robust and it's very easy to apply. Some of the qualifiers are justice-involved youth or adults, low income, if they have an incarcerated parent, or if they have any kind of disability, whether that be emotional, educational, physical, those are some automatic qualifiers for this program. So it's a great opportunity for the young adults in our community and we really hope to get the word out so people can take advantage of it.
Oh, thank you, Ashley. And you want to give us your telephone number and we'll add that down?
Yeah, absolutely. It's 765-716-6403.
And I'm sure you'll hang around.
Absolutely, I have flyers.
And you have some flyers, thank you.
How can they apply?
They can apply directly through our website and, which is easternindianaworks.org. All that information's here on the flyer. If there's any confusion about that, though, I'm giving my work number out, they're welcome to call that, I can walk them through it.
Yeah, and we know we need more trades, that's for sure.
We do, and I'll tell you, we're right, we're right in the middle of our first cohort and what a lot of our current participants are finding is that they're not interested in, you know, basic construction, but we have young adults who are learning that they're more interested in HVAC or in carpentry. And so we're trying to work with local employers that we've already partnered with through Eastern Indiana Works to get them some additional experiences that are more specific to what they're interested in. We have a couple who are enrolling in Ivy Tech so that they can further their education there. And that's, sorry, I left that part out. We are, we're partnering with Ivy Tech too. In the program, they're getting their NCCER, which is an industry-recognized credential in the field of construction. So if they complete the program in six months, they're leaving with their high school diploma, that NCCER credential, and six months of construction experience.
Well, thank you for bringing us some good news.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, we rushed into that Fairboards stuff. I just want to make you aware that those appointments end in December. It's only for the next two months, but they can apply to be reappointed, just like always.
Thank you.
I forgot to tell you that. That's okay. Okay, well, if there's nobody else, one of you can speak, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Second. All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.